Hey Ed.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Sammy, how you doing?
How you doing Rick?
Okay.
Good to meet you Rick, huh?
It's five o'clock, so we will, it's five o'clock, we'll have the, we'll start the City of Dunkirk zoning board of appeals. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Collier?
Here.
Commissioner Usaki?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lugo Alparo?
Here.
Chairman Howey?
Here.
Our first appeal of the evening is going to be the appeal of Roxanne Galoniac for permission to construct a garage and privacy fence at the property located at 417 Temple Street.
Dear zoning board members, Mr. and Mrs. Brzezinski are requesting permission to build a new garage funding McKinley Avenue. The garage and small porch total 2,082 square feet. Adjacent to the south will be a privacy fence much like the one on the south property line. They are seeking relief from the 25 foot front yard setback for the garage and the fence. At the time when the city streets were laid out, McKinley Avenue was actually an alley for the residences on street either side. Since then, lots have been divided and alleys have become front yards to new residences. As a reference, the fence on the south property line extends two sections with a 25 foot setback. We are proposing to remove one section panel. This would now be the setback of the street right of way or 18 feet and four inches plus or minus. We do not wish to get any closer as to allow a vehicle to be parked in front of the garage, putting it outside of the right of way and not to block the right of way line of sight. The struc- the new structure as depicted in attached drawings will keep in the character of the residential streetscape with a gable facing the street and a small front porch. Both homes directly across from the site have similar look to them. As part of the fence, there will be a two panel gate for RV access to the backyard. A maintained grassy area and a new decorative flowering dogwood will extend to the fence. A paved drive will be, will be located in front of the two garage bays and the porch. Thank you for considering our request. Sincerely, Richard Peebles, Jr., Architect.
Okay. So who wants to talk about this case?
Not it.
Go ahead, okay, come on.
Um.
You swear, so.
We were here May, and in talking to Glenn, Glenn had directed us towards Richard and. I am talking.
Yeah, hang on one second. Wait, wait, one second. We got, we have to swear everybody in. So that's one time I didn't do, I didn't do that last time. We have to swear everybody in, so we got to swear people in. So you have to, first of all, give your name and address to the clerk. So just state your name and address before he speaks.
Roxanne Galoniac, 417 Temple Street, Dunkirk, New York.
Okay, good. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we hired Rich because I was told that I needed a softer approach. We're looking to add the garage just because ideally we have the room and my husband's outgrowing the garage here in front and kind of booting me out of it. So I don't know what else you're looking for as far as to talk, but Rich is here to talk for me, I guess.
Right, well, we can go on the merits of the application and submit it. I mean, everything's laid out. I didn't, I didn't want to get any, like it says, I, you know, I didn't want it. Too much, wanted to make some compromise and, but give them as much backyard as we could.
Rich, Rich, we got, Rich, to swear you in too.
Oh, okay, Richard Peebles. My home address is 201 Lambert Avenue, Fredonia, New York.
What avenue?
What was this street?
Lambert.
All right, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we just wanted to compromise a little on the setback because we realized that, you know, there are other homes there that are on this street now and didn't want to make it look like a huge structure on the street. We pulled it forward a little bit because we're trying to get as much backyard as we can between the new garage and the house. I thought this was a good compromise and.
We're not hurting the tree.
And we're not going to hurt the tree. The big tree is on the site. Which we have to talk about later anyways.
Okay. Okay, yes, the actual garage is a little smaller than the first one, right?
Oh, yes.
Yep. I think it's about, I think it was eight, it's eight feet shorter.
Okay.
In length and in elevation length.
And you're not planning to put any type of a business in there, are you, Rex?
The, the small piece with the porch, I was talking to Glenn about eventually it could be five or 10 years to put us, my, I have a hairstylist. But in talking to Glenn, he pretty much said if I ever planned on doing it, I don't have the variance to do it at that point. So I'd be better off to build it now, even if it was something that was 10 years down the road.
Because you would still need to get a new variance for that.
Say that one more time?
You still need to get another variance for that. Like this variance is just the area variance to build the structure. It's not for the use.
Correct, but from what, from what I understand, a, an at-home salon is considered an at, well, a salon is considered an at-home business. So, like I said, there's, it's not coming this year or next year. It's just since the building's going up and we put in for the variance now. Tie it together.
So you're speaking the area variance to build the structure?
Correct.
All right. Any, there's nobody else on Zoom who wants to talk about this, right? Are any communications about Roger?
Yes. Dear zoning board members, my husband and I have resided at 407 McKinley Avenue for 11 years. This is a very nice neighborhood, all residents being very close and always watching out for each other. Many mornings, we have our coffee out on our front porch. The Galoniacs have made amazing changes and improvements to their backyard. Not only did they install a nice fence, but the great care and detail they took in staining and painting makes it very appealing to the eye. Prior to making all these improvements, the yard was overgrown with weeds, bushes, and decrepit pine trees. We consider the Galoniacs to be an asset to this neighborhood, and we would thank the City of Dunkirk. We have seen the pictures of the garage they wish to build in their backyard along with a privacy fence at the end of their property. We are very pleased and wish them luck. Thank you for your consideration, Robert and Marine McRob Peterson. Regards to Roxanne Galoniac's letter, we have lived here at 415 McKinley Avenue in Dunkirk, New York for 45 years. And we believe that Mr. and Mrs. Galoniac should be allowed to build and continue the improvements on their property. Their home and property has never, in all these years, looked so well-kept and maintained as when they moved here. They are a pleasure to have as neighbors, as law-abiding and taxpaying property owners, let them. I'm having a hard time reading that word. Let them continue on with their improvements. Thank you sincerely, Mr. and Mrs. Jacob Bowitz, 415 McKinley Avenue in Dunkirk. Mr. Gustafson, I'm writing in regards to the letter I received in reference to the permit denial for 417 Temple Street, Dunkirk, New York, 14048. I have no issue with Roxanne and Keith Galoniac moving forward with these projects. If anything, I feel that this will add value to the neighborhood. As far as the fence, I think it looks great and it is staying very nicely. This is not an ice sore whatsoever. I'm in favor of them building on their property. It will be adding value to their property and the houses in the neighborhood. Thank you, Lauren Pecus.
Hi, Ellen, do you have any?
Now, just reviewing things on this and, I think the request as presented. Actually, I'm not sure if this was like that last thing, but every, all the properties across the street, those are the required setback. There are a couple structures on across the street that are much closer with 18 feet with the. And Keith, those are already theirs.
Thank you.
Other than that, I have.
Okay, great. All right, so we'll move on to the next case and then we'll deliberate and make our decision. Second appeal is the appeal of Sam Ricotta for permission to construct a garage at the property located at 134 Lake Shore Drive West.
Mr. Ricotta submitted a letter with his case, but then later, or earlier today, he submitted another communication, so I figured I'd read them both at the same time. Members, members of the zoning board of appeals, this request for a variance to the setback requirements of the City of Dunkirk zoning ordinance is being made for the following reasons. One, minimum relief is being sought. Two, effort has been made to minimize any effect on adjacent property. Three, negligible variation from the existing building on the premises. Four, current encroachment into the right of way will be eliminated. It is believed that granting this variance may be justified based upon the following. One, existence of practical difficulty. Two, unique circumstances exist. Three, hardship is not self-created. Four, will not change the character of the neighborhood. Five, minimum relief has been requested. Six, justice will be served. I look forward to answering any questions you may have regarding this matter and invite you to visit the property prior to the public hearing to personally view the site and the circumstances involved. Sincerely, Sam Ricotta. Members of the zoning board of appeals, this request for variance to the setback requirements of the City of Dunkirk zoning ordinance is being presented for the following reasons. One, the proposed depth of the garage from Woodrow Avenue right of way has been kept to a minimum required dimension of 20 feet to accommodate the length of a vehicle. Two, by granting this, the requested variance, a 10 feet setback from the neighbor, from the interior lot line with the neighboring property to the east would be provided, thus minimizing any impact upon that property. Three, the residential structure existing to the south on this property is currently five feet from the front property line along the Woodrow Avenue right of way. The proposed garage location would not be obtrusive since there would not be a noticeable reduction from that setback. And there is no building nor will there ever be one to the north. Four, the current encroachment of the pre-existing storage building into the Woodrow Avenue right of way will be eliminated with the removal of that building. In addition to the above-mentioned practical reasons for requesting a variance to construct this garage as proposed, the personal reason is the fact that the owner has two vehicles, a watercraft, plus lawn equipment and furniture that must be stored indoors, particularly during the winter. Additional storage is also required for tools, building, and maintenance materials that personal effects. Granting this variance can be justified based upon the existence of practical difficulties resulting from circumstances unique to this property and not self-created in nature. No detrimental impact upon the character of the neighborhood will result if the variance is granted. Minimum relief has been requested and justice will be served. I look forward to answering any questions you may have regarding this matter and thank you in advance for your understanding and consideration of this variance request. Sincerely, Sam Ricotta.
So who wants to speak about this?
I'll speak on my own behalf. My name's Sam Ricotta, and I reside at 134 Lake Shore Drive West in Dunkirk.
Okay, so do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Great, go ahead.
As explained in the two pieces of correspondence that I submitted, one a summary to the zoning board and then the other more detailed analysis of what I'm planning on doing and the rationale behind it. I just want to build a garage. It's basically going to amount to a three-bay garage to accommodate my needs with minimal effect on the adjoining properties in the neighborhood, nothing different than what already exists here from on the other side of Woodrow Avenue nor on this side of Woodrow Avenue. Negligible, noticeable difference from what presently exists on these properties, so. Only asking for the setback reduction to the street.
Any questions? Can you tell us a little bit about the actual, what the garage will look like?
It's just going to be a straight-line gable roof, two stories in height. Second floor basically going to be just additional storage. May come a time when I might decide that I want to put in a, you know, additional room. I have, all my family is out of town except for one son and grandson, granddaughter. Everybody's out of town during the summertime. It's the only time that I reside here. And it is the time of the year when I would be expecting overflow company, I guess, if you want to explain my, my family in that respect. But what I would like to do is have the, since I'm putting up the garage, I'd like to have the opportunity to have enough space to accommodate my family. House that I currently have here on the property is only 1,000 square feet. It's two stories, 1,000 square feet. It's a really small house. So to accommodate my family, I'd like to be able to at least, you know, have additional there as well. And that would be down the road in the future, nothing immediate. But while I'm doing it, much easier to do it now, construct the building now rather than try to raise the roof at a later date.
Assuming the garage doors will be coming off of Woodrow?
That's correct. As it currently exists, I, I don't know if you have visited the site, if you had the opportunity to come down to the site, but there's between 25 and 30 feet of lawn area, actually, between the edge of the pavement and where the front of this garage is going to be. So there's ample room there for a driveway. The building is going to be set back away from the road at least that far to, you know, accommodate a driveway off the Woodrow Avenue right of way.
You have any concerns?
It does look like there's like grass there. From the drawings, it looks like the shed is like over the right of way.
The current shed is actually in the right of way, correct, Sam?
That's correct. That is correct. That shed will be removed, eliminating that encroachment into the existing city right of way.
According to this, the new building would be about six feet past the existing setback of the shed. Correct?
At least, yeah, approximately.
Point three. According to your survey.
Right. So the hedge row that exists there will be removed. You'll afford access with a driveway into the west side of the building off Woodrow Avenue.
All right.
Okay.
Letters?
Yes. Good morning. Nathan and Susan Bell of 7 Woodrow Drive, Dunkirk, are writing in regards to the zoning board meeting discussing 134 Lake Shore Drive West. We want it to be known that we do not have any issues with granting a permit to Sam Ricotta for the construction of a garage on this property. Thank you, Nathan and Susan Bell.
We'll go into deliberations and then we'll come back with our decision.
Commissioner Collier? Yes. Commissioner Usaki? Yes. Commissioner Rice? Yes. Commissioner Luwawfaro? Yes. Chairman Helwig? Yes. The appeal is granted with the following stipulations. The appellate shall comply with all testimony and information presented at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Granting of this variance is strictly an area variance to construct the garage. Any changes in use will require an application for a use variance. The board stated the following findings affect in their determinations. Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or will a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting an area variance? No, the proposed design is in line with the neighboring properties. Can other alternatives feasible for the applicant to be pursued be used other than granting an area variance? Possibly. However, the dimensions and style of the garage have been made to conform with neighboring properties. Is a requested area variance a substantial variation from the area of dimensional standards set in the zoning law? No, the request is minimal in nature. Will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? No, testimony indicates that the homeowners will maintain the property. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? No, the alley was converted into a street. In the appeal of Sam Ricotta for permission to construct a garage at the property located at one thirty-four Lake Shore Drive West. Commissioner Collier? Yes. Commissioner Usaki? Yes. Commissioner Rice? Yes. Commissioner Luwawfaro? Yes. Chairman Helwig? Yes. The appeal is granted with the following stipulations. The appellate shall comply with all testimony and information presented at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty.